So sir, your remarkable career has gone to different sectors and leadership roles. So what experiences and would you say your educational background that has helped to shape and prepare you for such a diverse and impactful journey?
Well, educational background, by the time we were going to school, schools were inspected regularly by government. Syllabuses were prepared, what you had to teach in primary one, primary two. Inspectors will come, look at your records, have you taught them? And so quality of education was insisted upon. And started elementary school. First, I was born in Lagos, but my father was a customs officer. And before I became conscious of my surroundings, he was transferred to Calabar. So Calabar is the first place I knew as a town where I started school, sacred art school. Then in standard three, when I was going from standard two to three, my father decided to take me to Hope Wadu, which he thought was... Now in Hope Wadu, it was a multi-disciplinary school. There was the grammar schools, element, there was the section to produce teachers. And there was the section to produce people more interested in agriculture. So they had these various sections, even printing technology. It was settled by the Scottish, you know. And when I got in, McGregor, old man, was still the principal. But I spent only one year and three months there, standard three, then moved on to standard four. And my father was posted back to Lagos. So I then went to St Paul's Catholic School in Abu Matan, which is dentally only recently. This is 122nd anniversary, you know, so... And I was there one year, you know, forty-four, forty-five. Then I moved to King's College, Lagos, nineteen forty-six. And from there to Queen's College, Oxford, where I studied PPE, philosophy, politics, economics. So that was really my... Now, why did I do that? I wanted to be a lawyer because I was interested in politics at that time, you know. And you're either a lawyer or a doctor. Engineering was just a few vacancies. The British Civil Service, Colonial Service, they would say, "Oh, we have seven vacancies for engineers in next year or two." So scholarships will be addressed only that limited number. But Nigerians could be lawyers, practice privately, doctors privately. But since I was interested in politics, in fact, one of my nicknames in King's College was African Messiah. Because I, well, one talked a little bit, you know. And I said, "You couldn't be a doctor, leave a patient who is dying because you have a political meeting." But as a lawyer, you were free with your time. So because of that, when they were offering scholarships, you couldn't put law, you couldn't put... So I thought I would do a degree in economics and then later my law and then come back. And so, but when you put economics in those days, the bad hand didn't offer economics. Even Legon, next door in Ghana, didn't offer economics. You would do Inter BSc and then if you're lucky, go to London or some English university. But with philosophy, politics, economics, it was... They gave us scholarship, with economics more important. And so there I was with a classmate who is gone, Mr. Heda. He also was with me in the civil service. And at that time, the headmaster or the principal of King's College was J.R. Bunton. He had been to Queen's College, Oxford. So he managed to get us, but of course, we had to have the correct qualifications. We were the founding students for HSC, Higher School Certificate, you know. And so that meant that... And we promised J.R. Bunton, the headmaster. Where I say headmaster, that's what we are used to in England. We were the principal, that we would do the... Because while we were... In nineteen fifty-two, England introduced the GCE, Ordinary and Advanced. And we were already beyond ordinary. And so privately, we took GCE and I got my four subjects at advanced level. So I could have left, you know, and gone straight to university. But we decided to stay on and did this Higher School Certificate. Of course, in those days, you had to have Latin. Luckily, Latin was one of the subjects we did in King's College, Lagos, you know. So I had all the qualifications to go to Oxford. And we went there and it was very interesting. You know, in Oxford, they insisted on tutorials. You can go to university lecture if you like, but the real instruction was two or three of you sitting with the tutor. You'll set subjects for an essay, which we write, then you present to him as a critique and all that. It helps, so it made you specific. And luckily for us, in Queens, as preparatory, you had to do logic and, you know, so both traditional and modern, you know, which was very helpful. In fact, if I had my way, I would insist that whatever course you are doing in the university, your first year, you should do mathematics, logic and any other subject. Because it forces you to go from, you know, one thing to the other logically. It makes you think deeply, think logically, you know. And this is what is missing. So whatever discipline you studied in university, by the time you come out, you should be taught to think from basics logically. It will help a great deal in country. So that is by way of educational background. But after the degree in nineteen fifty-six, because I got there in nineteen fifty-three, at nineteen, at that time, the British students had to do two years composite national service in the military. So people who were with were slightly, one or two years older, you know. It doesn't matter. That's me, I was nineteen when I got in. By fifty-six, finished. And then I stayed on to do, I had done PPE, Honours Degree. Now I was doing a diploma in social and something. They didn't renew my scholarship because they thought I should be doing higher degree, not... So anyway, I found myself now in London, working in the London County Council, hoping to, you know, go into an ins of court, read my law and come back, you know. My father had died when I was about to do school SAT. Maybe if he was alive, it would have forced me to do laws as a first degree. But while I was in London now, got a room near Seven Sisters. At King's College, we were used to turning back, the steward will come and serve you. Queen's College, Oxford, the same thing. Now I had to go to all these funny markets, buy your food, cook your food, while I was suffering that, good quotation, suffering, you know. And they now advertised that they wanted to recruit the first set of people to prepare for diplomatic service. I found it interesting. And I was, when they advertised, I was twenty-two. Then interviewed and accepted me. So I was one of the first twelve pioneers of the Nigerian career for in service, you know. The last one but me just departed a few months ago. So, and I, the last go-forward companion list, including Shakespeare. Anyway, so there we were. So I now was interviewed, accepted, came back to Nigeria, reported on a Friday, and they said, "You can come and resume work on Monday." It was like that. It's not what we are suffering now, of graduates for years, months, years, no employment.
The question I asked at first, I can tell how the quality of education and how it was done then shaped you and who you are. And, you know, it tells the story of why your impact and you have your legacy. You know, we're here because of the foundation that you...
Yes, you know, I told you that J.R. Bunton, headmaster, came from Queen's College. I'd been to Queen's College, Oxford. They brought him from West Indies, where I was a master in a school. King's College was founded nineteen oh nine. That school in West Indies was nineteen oh two. Similar British attitude. But the PPE we first heard of was from a teacher who came to teach in King's College, Ara Melphick. He had done PPE in Oxford. So that's where we had of the work, of the course, you know. And so it was easy for us to say we wanted to do a course which was there, existing.
Sir, let me just take us to the next step. So my next question now is about, you know, here you are, had your education, worked, you know, in government, different capacities. What would you say, you know, just reflecting back through your career, that what would you say were your most memorable projects, policies, and that you feel that, you know, had a direct impact in developing Nigeria?
When I... One of my assignments in New York, which was my last posting, I was posted there. And because we were not independent, I was listed in the British Mission. At independence, of course, we had bought, we had hired a place, office for permanent mission, furnished it. After independence, then we had Nigeria Mission, when we were admitted. Now, and my first permanent representative was Alaje Ngile Ruma. You know, he had been pilgrim officer in charge of pilgrims in Sudan. He had been a waziri of Bonu, but fell out with this Sadwana. Very interesting, he believed in education. And he had a daughter who was in class three in Queen's, Queen's College, Elonior, some, anyway, the federal girls' school there. Sadwana thought this girl in class three should be married to one of their political... And waziri said, "No, must continue, finish education." And as waziri of Bonu in that moment, he had four wives. But when he was posted to New York, he remembered the section of the Quran, which says, "If you have four wives, you must love them equally." And he found he couldn't. And so he retired three of the wives, came with one to New York. Now, that sort of background, now as part of settlement, you know, when there was nearly a nuclear exchange in nineteen sixty-one, sixty-two. You know, the Russians were trying to take missiles to Cuba. And Kennedy said, "If they cross a certain part of the Atlantic, there will be war." But the Russians kept steaming, and for two days, if you dropped a pin in the UN, you could hear it. Because you didn't know if the war, the war was coming to an end. But like, thanks to hotline, Kristoff and Kennedy were able to exchange and the Russians stopped short of crossing that line. After that, they negotiated how to stop nuclear proliferation. And Nigeria was one of the countries, or the country chosen to present Sub-Saharan and Central Africa. But my permanent representative, the ambassador, couldn't attend such committee. So I ended up there. Now, the Indians were representing Asia. Brazilians were there, representing Latin America. Me, Nigeria, representing Africa. But everybody knew we had no nuclear reactor. What are we talking? And so, our contribution, the Indians had fellows of Royal Society. They had nuclear reactors and they were quite advanced in this thing. Similarly, the Brazilians had some nuclear reactors. In fact, one of these things, I talked with them about cooperating. Anyway, so what do I do? Nigeria, what am I talking, what business? What Nigerian advice was I getting? So I listened to the Russians, Americans, who wanted to be able to go to Russia to respect, to make sure that a nuclear detonation is not underground and is different from an earthquake. And the Russians, who said, "You don't need to come to Russia. Some black boxes adequately positioned can tell you the difference between nuclear explosion and an earthquake." Whom am I to... So I listened to them, listened to Russians, and more particularly to the Indians, who at least had independent knowledge of what they were talking. I made a speech because everybody said, "Brilliant, well done, well done, well done." But I was saying to myself, "All I see in a rose voice, make these speeches, people clap for you." Without industrial capacity and adequate military technology, you're just making noise. So I decided that I should transfer from foreign office to home office and to an economic ministry to participate in the development of Nigerian capability. Also arranged later, you know, when I was in charge of NNPC, to set up some nuclear reactors in Ife University because I met some Nigerian in America who had done nuclear this thing. And of course, one of my old schoolmates in King's College, Omumechili, had done in his postgraduate nuclear work, you know. But it was not to be in the end. When I was retired or asked to retire in nineteen seventy-five, the money had voted because I was going to use the NNUC importing things, they could import things which will help them. And we were planning that by nineteen eighty-five, we'd have had the first nuclear power station. Of course, all that was jettisoned after the coup of nineteen seventy-five. But coming back to this thing, I was now transferred from the foreign office to home office in nineteen sixty-four. But the head of service then had the idea, "If you say you want to go to a particular ministry, we'll send you there." So I ended up as DPS Lagos Affairs, the ministry which... Because Lagos was run as part of, run directly by federal government at that time. So I was in the Ministry of Lagos Affairs as DPS. But there is no ministry with where you cannot do good work. But the two important ministries, later on, I became permanent secretary, Ministry of Industries. Later on, permanent secretary, Ministry of Mines and Power, which had to deal with oil and gas, you know. And so, and those were the two ministries I spent long time in. Nineteen sixty-five to seventy-one, sixty-six to seventy-one, Ministry of Industries. Seventy-one to seventy-five, in charge of oil and gas ministry, which looked after these subjects. Now, what was the question?
It was projects or policies that you spoke of?
So in the Ministry of Industries, when I got there, well, I was the person who detached the industrial section from trade and industry to form a separate ministry. So I had done that while officially acting palm side Ministry of Health. I did that, set up the ministry. And then, very interesting, you know, and then went to health. And there were things to do in health under Dr. Magico Dumi. And then, when the coup happened, I was moved back to Industries. Where I stayed now for five years. During that time, you know, first thing I met where they were, you know, we had textile industry, we had cotton, we have all the petrochemical business for artificial fiber. So we could have the whole garment. But there they were, printing our prints with imported, imported textile, cotton. And I said, "This must stop." And I gave them five years. In those days, you could talk in terms of years. It's not this instant change. Five years for backward integration. That was accomplished. First, they said, "Oh, you don't have long staple cutting." Said Gazira, where they have long staple cutting in Sudan. Most of the workers there, planters, are Nigerians who couldn't complete pilgrimage. About five million Nigerians. So I said, "What staple of cotton do you want to plant? You can plant them here." You know, so that objection was existing. Since we controlled importation, we limited them and said by nineteen sixty-six years, five years, we'd have phased out. And it was accomplished. Now, also, Standard Organisation of Nigeria set up when I was there to make sure that we maintain some standards. We also set up this industrial box to enable us to be able to pay. Because in those days, if you were in the UAC, before you became manager, you were properly trained. So you didn't want to lose that. Wanted to be able for them to train people from other industries and pay. That was the purpose. I don't know if they pursued it properly and so forth and so on. So, and so that backward integration was achieved. And of course, you know, being in Ministry of Industries, And of course, you know, being in Ministry of Industries, I then was in the Subcommittee of Permanent Sec, set up by the Prime Minister to address cross-cotton issues and advise him through the secretary to the government. And so, one played a role there, you know. And one also in Industries cooperating with N I S A, the Nigerian Societal Economic Research in Abadon. I was able to have people recruited by them to understand the Atody Little Group, who were advising us, American group, advising us on industrial planning and all that, so that we would have a capability. And I'm happy that also, as I said, what I was trying to say, soon as I got there, this military coup happened. And the Western countries, who had agreed to set up, you know, iron and steel, now abandoned it. Just as the Russians were saying they would support any country which wants to do iron and steel and basic industries as a challenge to colonialism and the Western industrial domination of us. So I then took delegations to Russia and negotiated the Adiokuta complex with them. And that complex was not just to build steel. It was also to set up a Quesha University with 3,000, to teach, transfer technology on planning iron and steel products. Because the first steel mill in India, I think the Indians might have participated 10%. But by the third one, they were doing 80% of the design and work. And this was supposed to be also part of the Abuja development. And not only that, signed with them, because when I got to Mines and Power in 71, I found there were discoveries of metals and things dating back to 1902. And we had not found out just the extent of it. So part of it was for them to come, fly over, try to identify particularly for iron and steel. And they found the Taqwek. Before then, we had traces of good iron ore in Bele. So while I was in Industries, we were trying to, just before me, when I took over, Nigeria was trying to set up the first vehicle assembly plants. And we looked at what had happened on the rest of the world. India had specialized in Morris Oxford. Brazil specialized in Volkswagen. They were now, after some years, able to produce a lot and to eliminate importation of knockdown parts. By contrast, Peru and Mexico had the rubbish we're having in Nigeria today. Multi, many, many, this is, and could lead nowhere. Because you had to have a certain volume to be able to eliminate importation. So we looked at the market at that time. Peugeot and Volkswagen were dominant. So we selected the two, negotiated. There were supposed to be two of them, Volkswagen and this site in Lagos. And we thought we had agreed programs of backward integration that had, when you're producing about so many thousands, you eliminate bricks, so many thousands, you eliminate batteries, so many thousands, you now cast the basic steel, you know, iron and the basic engine block, and you engineer it. So we worked out with these two groups, Volkswagen, this thing. But when I was transferred to Mines and Power, my successor, who was from the North, decided on what he called, I don't know what they called it, whether triangular, triangular sighting of industries. So that is why Peugeot now moved to Caduna. And of course, if it's Caduna and you brought the C K D completely knocked down by sea, you know, in transportation and all that. So they negotiated for a special additional concession for them. Despite that, folks are being set up in Lagos and quickly producing 50,000. Peugeot set up in Caduna. For the first time, we were flying in C K D by air from Paris or from where Peugeot is made. I visited it in Eastern France, you know. So that was that. We had Anamco to produce, that was Mercedes, to produce trucks, sighted in Enugu. Now had a new one in Bauchi. And the British one, which has closed down in the West under this triangular sighting of Nornani. And in fact, the point is that Adiokuta was set up. Shagari commissioned the rolling mills. If Adiokuta had been completed by now, my dream was that all along the river Niger, from Adiokuta to Bruto, you have people working with the products of Adiokuta, you know, adding value, just like the Neewi people. They are producing parts for all kinds of things. If they had the right metal for it and Adiokuta was there, it would have gone beyond cast iron to various types of steel. They could compete with this thing. In fact, we had made the progress. But by the time they did the coup of 71, and by the time handed over to civilians in 1979, we were manufacturing brake parts and radiators in Nigeria. So they had been eliminated. But today, since the volume is no more there, they've moved away, they're no longer there. We had Michelin, we had Dunlop, no more. Because of this inability to know that continuity is essential. So we'll come to that later on, maybe.
Definitely come to that because I have a question to you.
Yes.
Or one of the questions I've been waiting to ask you. And one of the reasons we're here is about nature. I am so curious.
No, before nature, you had asked, I've talked only of Industries. In Mines and Power, where I was now Permanent Secretary, and I had a good minister among them, you know, we were able, you know, before then, Nigerian government was very hesitant about joining O P E C. If you remember what happened to the man in Peru, I mean, not Peru, the man in, yeah, they are at war all the time now. He did, the, what's the modern name of Peshaw?
Peshaw, Iraq.
Iran, Iranians. You remember they had a Prime Minister or Head of Government who wanted to, Iranians to have more say in oil industry? And what happened to him, how they removed him? You don't remember? He was removed. Anyway, do you remember the name of the Iranian Prime Minister who was removed? Ayatollah was the boss, religious boss. Eh? No, not the Shah, not the Peshaw, not the Shah. The Head of Government, who initiated some changes on oil and was removed by the maneuvers of the Seven Sisters, you know. And so they didn't, they thought if you joined O P E C with the Arab-Israeli conflict, it might be dragged in. But no, we were able to show Venezuela was a member of O P E C. O P E C be acted on the basis of unanimity. So if you didn't want, you couldn't be forced to participate in that kind of. Now, but not only that, you know, we also, O P E C said it could control quota, give you quota to produce. And if you were not a big producer before joining O P E C, your quota would be reduced. So we, officials, planned and advised that until we produce 2 million barrels a day, we should not join O P E C. Now, just before the war, the civil war, discoveries were being made. But after the civil war, during the civil war, with the blockade and all that, we're only producing about 400, 500,000 barrels, mainly the Gulf non Chevron oil in the West, in the Delta. But immediately after the war, production quickly resumed. And by the time we were talking, you know, 71 or so, we'd gone up to 2 million barrels. But we had to watch when to introduce the memorandum to council because there were still some people afraid that O P E C will drag them into Arab-Israeli conflicts. Was it so? So one of the things we did, I negotiated the entry to O P E C. And it was adopted. And now also, we had as a matter of 7074 plan arising from conversations mainly with the academia, you know, because politicians have been driven out of office by the military. We had, in the 7074 plan, we had distinguished between strategic and non-strategic industries. Strategic industries like oil and gas and iron, which government adopted the policy that the Nigerian government, in the interest of Nigeria, should have at least 55%. For important industries like oil and gas, where we had started with 100% concessions owned by the international companies, that we must have 35%. O P E C, when they decided that they must participate, set its goal at 25%. But we insisted on our own plan. And in fact, we were denounced in one article, you know, in London Economist, Black Shakes, because of that. But nevertheless, one of the highlights is when we successfully negotiated, the American companies, we had nothing to do with it at that time, with shares, to acquire 35% of shares, which we did, 1973, you know. And that now gave us, because under that, we had some buyback oil, which we give them to maintain their markets and all that. But some oil which we could market ourselves, could get better money. Also, while I was there, you know, these oil companies used to tell us, and when they produce gold oil, they took it to their refineries and refined. So they used to tell us the price of oil in this thing. And under O P E C edges, we insisted, we must now negotiate posted price on the basis of which royalties will be calculated. And which we succeeded in doing while I was in this thing. But the landmark achievement was that, you know, from 1965 or so, before the discovery of North Sea gas, the Western countries were negotiating with Algeria and Nigeria, the acquisition of gas to do L N G plants. Nigerian processes of consultations were long drawn out. I was not there yet, I was in Lagos Affairs. And but still participated in the economic. So the Algerians were able to do the first L N G. While Nigerians were still consulting and all that, North Sea gas was discovered. So that knocked out that.
We have so many achievements by you, Peshaw, but just so that we can get you out. Like I have so many questions.
More questions. Anyway, I was happy that later on, as a member, many, many years later, 20 years lost, 1990, as a member of the Transitional Council with Shoneeko, we were able to arrive at the formula which has allowed an L N G to come to being. But that is 30 years after. So you can imagine what we lost. Anyway, go on with your questions.
It's so move, but you know how long? It's so move, but you know how long some of these policies were taken and have been impacted today? And some of them did not, you know, do, and how it's impacting us today? But you know, as I said earlier, there's a question about nature that I've been waiting to ask you. And this is NCF after all.
Yes, this is NCF.
Always me personally, I've been curious, what inspired your love for nature? And led you to being a voice on that?
Well, you know, earlier on, I told you I in Hopeodu, there were sections, and there was a section dealing with agriculture and this thing. And in nineteen forty-three or so, my father, who was in Calabar, decided to acquire a plot and build his own house, which he did. And I remember, I was then in Hopeodu. There were these teachers which were teaching us about cultivation of gardens and things like that. And there was enough grounds to lay out flower beds. And I remember one of the teachers from Hopeodu was invited by my dad to lay out flower beds in Target Street, Calabar. And of course, there we were. I was in Hopeodu, and I enjoyed working with him and all that. Then, for some reason, I also, at that time, nineteen forty, I was nine, now going ten. I enjoyed planting tomatoes, pepper and all that. So I thought of, those were the days. And the Target Streets, where my father had the house, hundred years down, there was a rubber plantation. Rubber, you got these rubber seeds, they were explode. So maybe that was the old, and then when we were in King's College, it was a great pleasure going to collect butterflies in what is built of all these areas now. Opposites, I mean, where you have the Nazis' hostel. There were all PWD playgrounds, where we used to go and play cricket and all that. And there were, you know, beautiful flowers, butterflies, used to go and collect butterflies. So maybe that was what kindled my interest in.
Can I interrupt a bit? I've always wondered if you were Minister of Food, if you had seen early on at that time, you know, the potential of environmental devastation. It was something then that we have also.
It was really bad. Because I remember a journey from Oran to Aket. And there was a river two miles up, people were defecating. Two miles down, you were collecting water from the river to cook, drink. It was very bad. And then when you now saw the damaged pipelines and spillage, destroying water, you know, the gray fish and the water life, destroying the possibilities of agriculture. Where in fact, yes. And it's a pity. All this talk, the UN scheme to clean up near Ogoga, I mean Ogoni, has not really gone far. Says very sadly. Then a great shocker, around the time I was now campaigning nineteen ninety-eight. You know, there was a gas pipeline which exploded somewhere in Delta, in Roboland. And gas is gas. These people thought by plunging into the water, they'd be saved from fire, only for the fire to grind the gas. So there were roosters. And I went to visit them. What was the name of the place? Anyway, Old Man Forget was the title of Vakon Norrages, an autobiography. Now, you know, so this is, you know, so one knew that. And and there was a military coup in Greece, eighties. And after the military coup, the soldiers insisted that everybody must plant a tree in front of his house. You know, and Mandilas was a friend, went once or twice with him to Greece and saw it. So, so those were my beautiful days. Planting with teachers from Hopeodu, going to the rubber plantation, hundred yards down, seeing the beautiful. I don't think the plantation is there.
Hi, and that's a question about conservation. So I would like to ask you another, the next question would be in conservation. What, what were the policies? Or also, you know, what role did you see played in Nigerian conservation particularly that?
Well, I was, Chivedu, as you know, was a friend of Prince of Netherlands. And the Prince of Netherlands, who was the first worldwide WWF president of the conservation movement, now took Chivedu with him to the International Committee, Board of WWF. So he was a member. Now, you're a member of International Board, but there's no conservation in your country. So this made Chivedu try to look for a few people whom he sold the idea of establishing NCF. And I was one of those. And so, no, 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 happy to be part of it. And in fact, you know, I was the first chairman of, I don't know if you, where is Dr. Nogja? He's not there. First chairman, I asked him to find out the name of the committee. The committee, which was in charge of publicizing NCF. And we used to have annual meetings with the permission of people in charge of Corona. And the late Aduka Lakiza was a member of the board there. So it was easy for, in fact, she succeeded me in the committee, you know. And so I helped in the council, where I was the council from the beginning. And but chairman of this subcommittee, which council. And we were able, then there was no, the national parks had become degraded. There was no authority interested in them. Species were being hunted for bushmeat, regardless of whether they were becoming extinct or not. And we were able to get Shagari in nineteen eighty-two president to formally, you know, give us, register us as as NGO in nineteen eighty-two. And to host a dinner at which, what was his name? The leading man in conservation activists. Not Atambro, not Atambro. Worldwide, you know, came, you know, a special dinner by Head of State, inaugurating us as a, and of course, he was removed as Head of State by Military Corps in December. I think December thirty, nineteen eighty-three, you know, succeeded by Bouare, who was Military President. And we still continued our dialogue with the government and produced the Endangered Species Decree of nineteen eighty-four, which Bouare signed as Military General. You know, so he is the person who signed the first decree, telling us about endangered species and what we must do to protect them. You know, and one was then in the council, one was in the government, which had been just removed, but didn't matter. And they used to be this picture, where the the date in the boardroom of signed it. And there we listed the animals, especially leopards, were almost extinct, and they're extinct now. That reminds me that in eighteen ninety, nineteen ninety, when Prince Philip, Duke of Edinburgh, came and laid the foundation stone of this place. He said he didn't like laying foundation stones, and then the thing is not developed. Luckily for us, three or four years later, Prince Charles as Prince Charles, now King Charles the Third, came. And we said, tell your dad that we built the place, you know. So, and I took, when he came, we had to, he came because we were commissioning the conservation area for gorillas, mountain, tropical mountain gorillas. Very few left between Cameroon and Nigeria. So we went there, helicopter, that we came in a big bird, villagers. That's one project which is not complete yet. Because we had promised, because he used to eat the gorillas. We promised we would bring once a week cattle, slaughter, sell to them. So leave gorillas alone, you know. That does not progress much. We have fear, insecurity. So when we got there, I'm going to tell you this story. We had in eighty-three banned the slaughter of leopards and the use of leopard skin and all that. And there we were, visiting the Obong of Calabar. Two war leopard, this thing and so, there do and all that. So I, and you know, the Duke was known for brutal questions. And I thought to myself, if he asked me, what is the wearing? What would I say? I had concocted a lie. I would say it's just artificial, it's not real. Luckily, he did not ask, so I did not lie. But there we were, received, Duke of Edinburgh and myself, by the Obong of Calabar, wearing leopard skin, we had banned. Anyway, so that was that. But again, we went to Adija, where we had, still have a good project, preserving water life there. And he had to plant a tree. And I didn't see any water, they didn't bring gloves. So poor Duke had to use his bare fist, bare hands to plant this seedling. But luckily for us, when he finished, they brought fresh water for him to wash, wash his hands, you know. Of course, we went to Kanu, and he remembered coming with Princess Elizabeth, Princess then, and visiting the Kanu Emias accommodation. Remember the place, you know, so it was very, very, but for some time too, I served as a member of the International Board of WWF. But I had to resign when I agreed to join the Transition Committee nineteen ninety-three. You cannot be a member of government and the International Board. Because a lot of their criticism, lobbying and all that is with government. You know, so that was that. But after government, I continued with NCF and all that.
So so you've like just shared with us, you know, your experience working from the very beginning with NCF. And as we know, a lot is, you know, as you have also, you know, described, it's the foremost NGO, environmental NGO in Nigeria. But I would like to find out from you personally, having worked with them, given all the years, you know, that you have put in, what do you think stands NCF now? And makes you, gives you the position that, you know, people give it right now and we form this and best.
One good thing which NCF started, and we hope to resume and expand, was having nature clubs in various secondary schools. We also helped them pioneer ecology and environmental studies in the universities in Calabar area and in the Delta. So, and as I said, we pioneered the, where we pushed the government to start Federal Environmental FEPA, was the full acronym people, you know. And later on, the Ministry of Ecology, Environmental and this thing. And to start devoting a portion of revenue for ecology, Ecology Fund. Unfortunately, Ecology Fund shared out to governors never found its way to ecology. Even we have not received one penny from that Ecology vote. But despite that, we were able to get companies to support us. In fact, maintenance of this place is largely due to Chevron. and we are trying to see how we can replicate this LCC complex in every state as a way of encouraging. And personally, I'm going to commission, hopefully in a month or so, a neighborhood, a city square with NCF. You know, where people can see some trees, break up from work after lunch, come and sit down, jogging tracks, open air tracks in Asaba as a donation. Because Asaba unfortunately has lost all its green areas. People have bought land, especially people from across the river. And you know, they are used to one decking, two deckings. You put your hand across, you shake the person in the other house. You know, luckily in Asaba, we had planning authority, which prevented that. But I don't know these days, planning authorities, whether they do their work, it's difficult to say. So.
So please ask me about what you think the challenges are. Because you know, you talk about Nigeria, in Nigeria, that we have policies, but we've just never had the will to enforce them.
Since they destroyed the civil service as we knew it, after the coup of 75. Because when we entered civil service, you see three or four people, say, I'd like to be like that. And we, our sebs, look for high flyers, who would go to universities, talk to deans and say, who are your best students? Invite them, try to persuade them to come and play a role. But after the debacle of it, 1970, that hasn't happened. And I remember in 1973, the Public Service, Federal Public Service Commission, thought consulting me, wondering where I came from, gave me power of attorney to go to America and interview everybody Nigerian with master's degree or doctorate. Try to tell them what is possible here and appeal to them to come. And I'm lucky, I'm glad, one or two very distinguished people came, you know. And that was that. Then in 2010, to see me as chairman of a committee, including two ex Attorney Generals and two ex-heads of service, set out to intervene in the dispute between the Public Service Commission and the head of service. Only to find that where we had seven public service commissioners, Katagu, Sasemo Almanwa, Brilliant Sergeant, former Chief Inspector of Medical Services, et cetera. We now had 18 commissioners. And they had farmed out states, two for each. And if you wanted to be something, Pamsek, you go and talk. Talk what? And we saw the so-called exam. If asking intending Pamseks to answer, because elementary, you know. And who marked them? So we degraded so much. But we must be able, because it's not enough to have policies. You must have people with institutional knowledge. People like us, they didn't want to remember as junior soldiers, they used to salute. So if we're still there, I told you how we will see some exemplars. I'd be like that. We'll be able to say, young man, you can't do this, can't do that. They didn't want that. They really want to behave as they wished.
Talking about young soldiers, that today Nigeria, given our current political landscape, if you were to give advice to young Nigerians that are aspiring to contribute to national development, what would you say to them?
You know, before Covid, a few of us elders, if you like, in Metropolitan Club, were consulting. And even we involved people like John Agawan, Shonekum and all that. What we need is to discover in each state, a few people across religious, across ethnic divides, who believe they must return to good order, good governance, diligence, honesty, integrity, so forth. And we were consulting. And I'm glad to say, we saw some young people. I maintain contact with them. I was a bit happy when NSAAS came, that here at least to get people independently united, you know, themselves. So I was very sorry to see them driven underground. Because when you go underground, when you come out, we don't know what you come out. But there was a French sociologist, Maurice Duvetier, after whom it is named, the law of iron law of oligarchy. It doesn't matter if there are 20,000 people in an organization. They end up being run by six people or seven, who are really day-to-day interested. So what we were hoping is get a few people from across the states. And they should now commit themselves to agree to a medium and long-term plan, stretching over 20 years, to take Nigeria from where we are to first world status and global significance, which we should have attained by the turn of the last century, but for the damage of 1975. And that damage was not only the destruction of the civil service, but the abandonment of planning and respect for the discipline of planning. Because whether you're public or private, if you have no long-term plan, you get nowhere. So if we went back to a commitment to a merit-driven system, there is no part of Nigeria which is badly challenged, that doesn't have intelligent people. Go back to merit-driven, good quality education. I told you how under Dr. Majakodemi as Minister, he worked out healthcare system, you know, which, we had some Kuti, Dr. Kuti, you know. If we had that all over. Good education, good infrastructure, especially of communications. And a language policy which people like us would have introduced latest in 1977, which would not require anything drastic. Like now, wherever you're growing up, you learn that language, Akad Efiq. Then by 10, English becomes a means of instruction, international language, maybe tomorrow Chinese, we don't know. But the language policy would have said, if you're from the north, choose one southern language, which this, when you enter SSJS1, choose one southern language, which the school must be equipped to teach you. They would choose Ibu or Yoruba. If you're from the north, choose, I mean, we are from the south, choose one northern language. They will choose Alsa, not Fufuli, not, you are bureau. Not bureau, you know. And which means that within seven to 10 years, any two educated Nigerians meeting would have one Nigerian language in common, English or the international language, you know. And by now, we'll be asking which tribe, which this, agreed to unity under a secular state with freedom of religion. Not what happened where the 30 million animists of 1959 census suddenly became all Muslims. But as soon as you cross Cotoncarafi Bridge, you see Sudan interior, a kankar, whatever it's called, and all that sort of thing, you know. So we must avoid the chaos. Look at Somalia. Same race, same religion, same language, a few million people. But for 40, 50 years, no governance, anarchy. That must avoid. So what I would say is that those people we discover, young people. And by young people, I meant 25 to 65. Because at 65, you have 10 more vigorous years. You know, not yesterday's men like Asaba. So they must agree that nine of them cannot, like it happened some time ago, say they want to be president, unite under one, maximum two, and agree to this continuity. And within, we were ahead of Asian tigers. We started assembling cars before South Korea. We now import from them. I told you how we had eliminated predators and all that. All that is possible. And you, you go around the world, deans of faculties of leading universities are Nigerians. So why can't we create? I'm talking about that in 2000 AD, when I was still part of the last, the Abasangjo, General Abasangjo and myself went to Washington. And seated in the room with us were nine Nigerians with NESA patents, NESA patents of America. So, you know, we have people and we must encourage them to come and reignite the path to. And those of you, is it in the Bible? Or is it a British poem which says God moves in a mysterious way? His wonders to perform. So we are praying anxiously. Whoever is president, whoever they choose, somehow change should begin.
Thank you so much. I have one last question, and that's just advice to young people who are interested in conservation.
In? Now find out, young ones and NCF. Anybody here from NCF? NCF, we must reactivate these nature clubs. Eh? Nature in schools? No, not one or two. We have to have them across the nation, one. What was the question? They should join it. And we also had state chapters. I think only Kalaba still exists. Is the one in, is beneath, is not, you know. We should reactivate them. Because I remember as a member of council, wasn't president then, in Kanu, all the district heads are there with Red Machido, the Emia of Kanu. And we are giving them plaques, certificates for the organizations. We must, and I hope that we'll be able to replicate LCC in all the states. We've got some, so my advice is, young people should participate in those things. And if it is possible, and where they live, they can find space to plant a tree. They should please do so and nurture the tree till it is, doesn't require your watering, you know. If you see my house there in Victoria Island, you see trees there. It was all sand before. But surprising to me, when I was looking for trees, you know that the marina had a lot of trees until Julius Berger mowed them down for nothing. They didn't need that, they didn't need to do that. Just like the damage that would happen anyway. So I picked up one or two seedlings. I thought they were just shooting out. I didn't know that they had not developed because they were covered by bigger trees. As soon as I put them up there in Victoria Island, within one year, you saw that these were 10-year-old, 20-year-old trees, shut up and, you know, with fresh air and sunshine. And you know where we are? We used to be Kachwarena Island, Cactus Island. When you reach Wilmore Point, in those days, when we were students, you could hear the waves two miles away. Then you walk, there was no transport. You walk for two miles to get to the beach. You know, we've reclaimed everything. They've even gone for a while to, for the original place. So my advice is that wherever there is, if they're at the age, they should join nature club in schools, nature club in universities. Help to participate and support whatever the Ministry of Environment is doing for states. If trees are planted, they should not kill them. They should help to nurture them. And wherever they can, plant a tree. It will guarantee us. And where you see birds come, you know it's healthy. And if you manage to see birds start coming to the tree you've planted, then you've done a great deal. And but one challenge we have is how to get the people who exercise power to really embrace the mission of environment. How we can ensure that future generations can still hear bird songs, can still see butterflies, can still see clean brooks. can still see clean brooks running in the forest. We mustn't destroy that. It's absolutely essential for a good life.
Thank you so very much, sir. We have, thank you for honoring our invitation. And I'm so happy to be able to speak to my chair for the total lean on his words.
A great.
I personally have been quite enlightened and educated today. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Just to have your perspective on the current economic situation.
Yes, very bad.
The economy. What you think the government can do, you know, to put things back on track?
It's not, it's not by magic.
Over the years, yes.
Nigerians must go back to logic, you know.
What can be done to remedy this situation?
We have to go back to the plans we abandoned. There is no state in Nigeria which hasn't got agricultural produce, which if processed and value-added to international trade standard, would not comment good terms of trade. Number one priority is modernized agriculture and agri-allied industrialization. And within one or two years, we'll be able to export non-oil products, which is what we did before independence. And I was telling you earlier about minerals discovered, not benefited and all that. If we add value to our minerals as well. And of course, in all this, good quality education is necessary. So government will now organize cooperatives of farmers, well-trained farmers, to produce whatever is possible in that state. Find out from processors what quantity they require, you know, to make their machinery, their factories productive and profitable. And make sure that enough farmers are organized, their harvests are collected and delivered to these processors. You know, and of course, what we already have in production, improve them. And more important is to make our people not just talk. You know, I'm going to take ten million people out of poverty. Where, which are the projects? Where are they cited? Have you costed them? This we used to do before budgets were prepared. We should return to that. Consult all the states, choose locations of projects, cost them by honest quotations, not sharing money through corruption. And let us return to positive public-spirited service and patriotism. Not using office as a means to make money. And one was happy when Bouari said, change begins with me. I publicly proposed salary brackets, which in this country today would make you comfortable, beginning from the president and cascading downwards. The American president, think four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars official. Minimum wage twenty-five thousand. What is that to one? Senator, one seventy-five thousand. Minimum wage, twenty-five thousand, seven to one. At that time, Nigeria, senator, when he takes everything, three hundred and twelve million, two hundred and twelve. Minimum wage, one ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight to one. So our GDP does not justify that, nor even the salaries paid by top executives in private sector. And when you compare this with what happened in 1962, when we were doing the first post-independence plan and Balaawa, all the federal ministers, Okwara, Sadwana, Akintola, all the state ministers, you know, regional, took ten percent salary cut to signal the need for savings. Is anybody today in Nigeria who has one million, before the cascading of prices with this floating, floating naira, you know, with one million naira to spend, when the average, eighty percent of Nigerians can, one million naira to spend a month, when the average Nigerian, or the majority, I don't know how much they have to spend, maximum hundred to two hundred thousand. I don't know how much a bag of rice is now, you know. So we must go back to production, to merit-driven system, proper education and basic healthcare. And the infrastructure of communications, you know, transportation and all that. It's possible. And these young people must agree to unite under one person or two maximum and have continuity. Because to start assembling cars, then you abandon the factory, you start, you know, it's nonsense. If this place had been abandoned ten years ago, it would be bush. If you come here now, something will eat you, not you eat it, you know. So that is what I would say my advice is. And cooperate with everybody. This instant self-gratification. When you see the life they live, it's not very pleasant. You're in your house, the bicycle tyre explodes outside. Would you, would you shake? For what? Because you've taken money which is not your own. So, and if we do this, we'll all become bitter. If you want to end, with one dramatic, two dramatic examples. My first car was a Peugeot 403. I bought it in nineteen, nineteen fifty-seven, Abi. And at that time, one ton of cocoa could pay for it. The equivalent now is a Peugeot 565, you know. And now, you require ten tons of cocoa to pay for it. Who is going to swallow ten times more cocoa? Whereas if we had not, through Wava, destroyed, when we had forced people to invest, to turn cocoa into cocoa butter. And if we had continued with the production of milo in Nigeria and bonvita, I think, price of bonvita then is, has increased, it would not be that. Similarly, we taught the Malaysians, all of our palm oil. We now import from them. We had reached a point where we were making this butter. What do you call it? This artificial butter from Pamkan oil. Mad, Madrin, yes? Now, it's gone. And I remember as a young man, there was sunlight soap. Are we still producing it? Nineteen twenty-two, they started in Apapa there. Adding value to, you know, so this is, there is no other way. It's not by magic, it's not by declaration. It's by producing enough to export so that the gap between your export earnings and your import expenditure drastically reduced. And that is possible only through planning and diligent implementation of the plan with discipline, you know.
Thank you so much, sir.
Good.